This conference will now be recorded.
Travis was gonna join us.
He said he would.
But he was gonna join on here and maybe he just hasn't. You ready? Alright, if you're ready for a roll call, Mike Bargnini.
Good morning or good afternoon.
Lloyd Colston.
Here.
Brendan Jellings. Chris Johnson. Travis is not here. Dwayne Eastman.
Yeah, here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
Dottie Smith.
Yep. Again, we have a common interest. So it's always. So we'll come to order and please review your minutes.
Oh, wait, bro.
Second. Motion second, any further discussion? All favors signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to recess the planning commission from being deported something. And this affects only those that live within the city.
Yes.
I have a motion.
Oh. I move that we close the planning commission and do a board of zoning appeals. Sorry.
Any discussion? All favors signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our first order of business is although we have a chair and a vice chair. If you could. For planning, we do not have resoning. So I need a recommendation for zoning chairman and vice chair.
And in the past, we just flipped the two roles around. You can do that or it can keep them the same or it can be two totally different people. It's up to you guys.
What do you want to do, guys?
Which one, which ones other than down?
Which one, what?
Who lives down?
So the only people that don't are Mike and Brendan.
Me too.
Oh, okay.
Everybody else lives here. So we can continue as we are, we can reverse it or you can put two totally new people in there.
It'll stay the same.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That sounds good.
Hey, all favors signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we got it.
Just the formality. You gotta do it.
Okay, I need a motion to open a public hearing to continue the advisability of granting a variance to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to five feet in construction of a carport at 313 E. Avenue. I need a motion to open for public hearing. Gentlemen? In town gentlemen?
Oh, you need a motion?
I need a motion. Yes.
I'll move that we hold open the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All favors signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Get it, Josh?
Okay, so here's the property in question, 313 Meek. So this is about a front yard variance request. And for those who were here at last month's meeting, I briefly talked about this. So should have a general idea. So this is the neighborhood. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the Brad Meek neighborhood. So Robert and Judy Jewell are both here today, requested a variance to allow a carport on their front yard setback of their property a year. The area surrounding the property, it's all residential. And they're, again, they're wanting to put a carport there. The issue, if you're familiar with Brad Meek at all, there are some alleys in certain areas, most areas, there's not a true alley. It's just a utility easement. So they're not all open. In this case, they are. It isn't open, it's partially open, but not all over their property. And what that means is they don't have the means to place in the rear yard because they wouldn't be able to access it from there. So this, I checked the property history, wasn't any land use cases on it. The house is built from in the 50s, which is normal for the neighborhood. And there is a little building in the backyard that was built in 2020. Herbs brought in. So again, here is the house in question. So this is where it would be approximately if you granted it. Shouldn't, the carport itself wouldn't adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners, I don't believe. So this is probably something you guys need to determine, but I did put my comments on whether or not there is a hardship here. It is basically impossible to put a carport on this property if you don't put it in front. That's, that's the hardship that we're talking about here. Is it in line with the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations, granting variances? I usually say this every time I do a variance. As long as you're doing it, you're finding whether it's a hardship or not, that's not contrary to the regulations. That's what variances are for, is to come up with these case by case situations. Again, it would be up to the board to determine if it's a hardship. So again, is this situation you need to the property? Technically, no, because there's other properties in this neighborhood that have the same problem. But it is unique to the neighborhoods that don't have alleys, I guess you could say. And there's no way, there's no way to pass. You can't possibly pass a vehicle between these houses. That's not going to work either.
Josh, where is the property line?
The front, which front? I don't know exactly where it'd be in this image, but probably kind of right. I don't know how big that panel is.
Because there would be. The city would have the front part or potential sidewalk. It would have to be five feet back of that. And that's what we're talking about.
Well, it would be probably, the property line is probably at least five feet beyond that. So the proposal would be probably more like 10 feet from the curb. That's what I'm saying. That it wouldn't be five feet off the edge of the street. That's not.
So are we talking about from what used to be a garage, 25 feet out?
To the property line. That's. So here's the, I guess I didn't say this, this is the looking west along Meek. Again, I'm sure most of you are very familiar with this neighborhood. This is looking off of the east, so we're all similar type houses. There isn't any kind of sidewalk. The street is fairly narrow. So what I came up with was, so these houses in this neighborhood are basically right at the front yard setback line. So they're about 25 feet off of the property line. When I was speaking with our applicant, 20 feet would be plenty. If they were building a carport there, it would cover the car that they have more of a coverage. And they would still have that five feet. So that's why we stuck to the five feet. I'll actually make one that's a full 20. But what I recommend you do, and why I gave you the amendments that we talked about last week, is basically follow those, that amendment that hasn't been made yet as conditions. So the carport is supposed to be over the driveway. That wasn't an issue that they're proposing to do that anyways. Shouldn't be used for storage of materials or equipment. Shouldn't be used, oh, it has to remain open. Has to stay a carport, not a garage. The five feet is put in there, although that's, that was already in the language of the motion. Anyways, and it should be somewhat compatible with the house. So we're not talking about a metal carport. They indicated that actually was what they wanted. They didn't want a car, metal carport out front. So that wouldn't be an issue. And I thought I had another one. I think I must have skipped over. Oh, it's not to be used for the parking of an operable vehicle. And the good thing about this, the variance, that kind of language would stick with the next property owner. So if they sold it, we would still want to adhere to that. Beyond that, the other reason I would suggest it's maybe okay, although I am somewhat concerned about precedent setting here. I will admit that. But it doesn't, it's not a negative thing for the neighborhood, other than they don't like the looks of it, I suppose. But it doesn't cause a visual obstruction. It's not a corner or anything, so it wouldn't be a problem there. And it isn't opposed to the regulations. The, yeah. That's, that's pretty much what I have.
Okay. The owners are Bob and Judy Jewell. Okay. Bob and Judy, how long have you owned the property?
Maybe six years.
Okay. So that garage is already enclosed, you hold on to it?
I.
I'm not even sure.
I don't think it's ever a garage.
I'm not sure.
I thought it was a first. I thought it was a first, but I looked at the way it's built and it's built up higher before the, the, way much higher. I don't know how they'd ever got a car up there and up over that big. Oh, I think your house was built that way. And I don't think they ever did have a garage. But that's just my, what I see.
The front door actually comes in the side there.
Inside, right?
Yeah, so it comes into the room that would do the garage. So.
Yeah, I have one of my great kids just bought a house in that area and it actually was almost, you know, it was a garage, but when they unclosed it all, they added floor and they added and they changed the front door. See where the sidewalk is, that is, my grandson's front door was the end of, where that sidewalk was up on the porch. When they changed, changed most of the garage, then they changed the front door and then so.
Which could, I mean.
Yeah. Your main concern is we're going through the paperwork to change, to change the ordinance. And we haven't, this is just presented to us tonight, and we haven't had a chance as a board to go through it. I want you to have your carport, propose to a carport that meets the architectural design in your house, but I do want this board to have an opportunity to go through this decision on it. Because at this point, we would be approving, it absolutely would be a variance. If we can wait just a little bit, then it might not be a variance at all. How long is a little bit? What are we talking about? Why do they come on you? By the way, I am, I am here. What was very, what are we talking about?
I think you could probably set up a public hearing for a decision.
I think we need to, before we have a public hearing, we as a board need to be able to consider this.
Sure. What, I didn't put it on the agenda, but there's no reason you couldn't take some time to discuss this as the planning commission after we've done this.
Right, we can do that. And then you could set it as a public hearing.
Either, either November or December, whichever way.
Josh, before we get into that, if we did approve this, if does it set a precedent for their neighbors, the rest of the community, or not a precedent at all?
Definitely would.
Every, I would argue, every variance does set. There's, there's no way to get around that. Quite frankly, every decision that this body makes, nice.
My, my question was leading to the following variance request. Where does that train in?
It ends when we do this. And that's, that's really what we need to take care of. And if we can come to a resolution on this.
Yes.
They don't need variances. They need a permit. And it has to follow the guidelines that are sent. They don't need the variance.
Correct.
The only reason I asked about, you know, how long it takes is because we're getting close to winter. I know. Yeah, I know. When are you hoping, correct? Well, I, I don't know.
Soon as, soon as I find somebody that will do it and has time not to do it, a professional, not amateur, but professional.
Have you submitted plans to John? Have you submitted plans to a city?
No, because essentially what happened was I denied their request.
Yeah.
Yeah, he denied my request about two or three years ago.
Okay. Yeah. So. And when we had that hailstorm, it just, it kind of hit it while we took.
Totally.
And it was total. Yeah, my house took two minutes. Yeah. So that's why it became important to me because we can't afford buying a new car every time something bad happens.
Yeah, buy a new car every year. It's not hard.
And even with insurance.
Now, my car was under a carport. Well, this one really, because it was under nothing. Yeah. A lot of cars were totally here. A lot of cars.
Lot, hard, total. Insurance kept looking at it. Finally, they just said, there's nothing we can do, totally. That's okay, whatever.
Yeah, I, I'd like to be in this. I'm sure the board would love to say, hey, go ahead, but we really need the opportunity to go through the paperwork and make sure we're doing something that will stand. Even though we started this before that? Yes.
Especially since you started.
Still goes through the city commission.
Yeah. So what do we have to do? You have to give us a little bit of time. Oh, okay.
Wait.
What I would add, since they're kind of talking about discussing this, if you were just willing, if you're willing to stay a little bit longer after this part of the meeting's over, then you can hear what they're talking about.
Yeah. And then tell us today? Is that the idea?
No, no, you ain't got here today at all.
Then possibly in November? Could it be a meeting in November?
We can probably make that happen.
Well, not till November? That's our next meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, the meeting. And we have, we have that meeting on the zoning commission and approved or not approved with the ordinance.
In the meantime, I'm going to encourage you to get your plans of what you're going to build and is that opposed to Josh?
Well, I kind of have an idea on, you know, what I want, but I don't want.
Idea on paper and.
I'm just running out of time. I'm like, winter.
Yeah. Well, I think it's still a few little things in wintertime. There's a lot of good days. Carport just says we're unsure or something else. It's not snow. Do you need a motion to adjourn the board of zoning appeals yet?
If we're through discussing that, yes.
I would prefer, though, that you do take some sort of vote, even if it's a table.
Then let's.
For the record.
Gentlemen, if you give me a motion that we could table this issue or could I say one more? Would you also, of course? When this point, this other guy, are we going to maybe be able to get it even with this new drill or not? I don't know. I can't answer that. All right. All right. We're going to go through it. We're going to, we don't want to set a precedent. We don't want to say, sure, okay, but yes, this comes up and we go, we go public. And we don't want to set a precedent that won't work. And next week, we have somebody that comes and says, well, if you let them do it, we want to do the same thing. And we'll go through this, hope we don't. So give us the time to go through this.
You've already given us two years. Sure.
Yeah, and meantime, have your people draw up your plans, knowing people.
Thank you. Hopefully it is.
If it is available.
You know how far I didn't get it?
You have to pin it down. I'm getting, I'm getting a chain. You know those, what do you call them, air tags?
She's air tagged.
Yeah. I'll help you. You need a list of our neighbors and okayed it or?
We can, yeah, we can put that on the record.
Yeah. And so, so in the meantime, you're going to get plans drawn up and submitted to Josh. So we'll have a zoning commission meeting next month to go through this. If we do wind up approving the changes, then you'll be able to pull your permit, you get to go. So you won't lose any more time. So. Don't let it smell of city in Japan. Yep, you will.
Yes, I will.
You will. Yeah.
Some way you can.
And, and it'll, it'll be another public hearing, you're welcome to come. With Josh.
In fact, even if you don't have a question before the committee, you're welcome to come.
Oh, God. General company.
So would the city commission.
Yes, they would too.
Yes. Okay. You need a motion to table this.
Yes. That's my recommendation as opposed to denying it.
Right. Yeah.
Because you're not really.
So you don't have enough information to approve it.
That's fair.
Right.
So let's be fair.
I'll make a motion to table this issue.
Say that.
And how long you table it until?
So next meeting, I guess.
That's fine too.
So do.
I think I can say that.
Any further discussion? All favors signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, table. I need a motion to come upon zoning and back to the plan.
I'll make a motion to leave, get out of the zoning, back to planning.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, we got two seconds. We got second, third. All favors signify with aye.
Aye.
We're back.
Okay.
So would you like to discuss that as a planning commission?
I'd like to.
Oh, wow.
All right, so what I'm going to do, so all of you have copies of what I was talking about last month, but I was going to bring it up here on the screen as well. So I'm pulling up last month's in the packet. Where is it? There it is.
Oh. That was handed out, looks like it.
Yes, that, that's the sheet that I handed out. So I'll kind of just rehash, I won't go into detail, but I'll rehash what I was talking about last month. So the reason that I even wrote this, a possible amendment, was because I have received a lot of very similar requests to what the Jewels have brought. In most of the city, it is possible to put a carport in the backyard because of alley access. It may not be ideal for everybody, but that, there is a way to go. But in a few neighborhoods, including their neighborhood, they were just north and several others actually around town, especially along Summit Street, between Summit and First and several places, there's an alley there. So what I did was I wrote this amendment to allow such a carport to be placed on the front yard setback in these neighborhoods that don't have an alley access. So they may, they may have a utility easement, but they don't have true alley access. And so the way this is written, if it's part of the supplemental district regulations, Article 20. This is, so there's a section in that, in that part of the code that talks about additional requirements for residential districts. And so right now, what it does is it says you can put an accessory building in the rear yard with these smaller setbacks, three foot, five foot. It just has to be 10 feet away from a primary structure. Now, carports, usually not concerned about that. That's for garages. But that's also detached. This is a case where it probably is not detached. It's probably attached to the front of the house. And so what I did was if we're going to allow something like that, we need to have some conditions applied to it. So where it says carports for single family and two-family dwellings located on lots without a platted alley adjacent may project into a required front yard, provided they meet the following conditions. And so these conditions are very similar to what I had put on the case. They have to be over an existing paved driveway or it has, it has to be paved underneath it. Can't be used to store anything. That needs to be in separate building. We don't want that out in the elements. Can't be enclosed. That will help with visibility. Can't be more than, and this number could be something different, but can't be more than 18 feet wide. Most of them are not going to want, that's a two-car. That's what that is. So that, we might not want that. We could already shrink it. Also, the same thing that I suggested with their case is you can't go any closer than five feet in the property line. So instead of a 25-foot front setback, it would be five or this only. And finally, it would need to be constructive materials that are compatible with the house. So again.
So no metal?
No metal carports.
No plastics, no metal?
Yeah. So there's something in there about tying it in, but even as Brendan's here has said at the last meeting, that's not always structurally possible. Make it look like it's part of the house.
Yeah, I drew a lot of those areas. There are some very nice looking ones that look like they were constructed at that time. When you talk of property line, you're not talking from the curb.
Correct.
Because the city does have that little strip and an area, even if there's not a sidewalk, the city couldn't put one in. So you're talking about five feet from where that sidewalk would be, right? Because that's.
Essentially.
That's their actual property line.
If we have to call it.
Yes.
We have to move.
And replace the sidewalk when necessary.
Yes.
Yes, I'm opposed to that.
What would be the possibility of an all steel house?
I would say that that'd be fine. It could be still.
There could be metal. Okay.
I think.
I don't think it'll ever happen, but you never know.
No, but we have a few expenses.
It would also, it would also.
Well, I just question if it'd be compatible.
Yeah, well, that's why I didn't actually outlaw metal carports.
And the idea of an all steel house would be expensive, expensive, but it would survive the hailstones that.
I'm out all dented up. I have quite a bit of metal around my house. I never really got dented.
Dented and still be fixed.
Nothing ever replaced.
Okay. Now, the, now what, the way I wrote this, this would be an administrative decision that would have to come before the planning commission or in the board of schedules. You could word it to where you do have to come get an exception. It would be in a different section if you did that. I'm just presenting that I would recommend not doing that because I don't think you want to meet all time. As a, as a board, so that, that doesn't really help anybody.
You have something in here. All sorts carports shall be located only over an existing paved driveway. Or what about the places that don't already have an existing driveway?
Are you suggesting move over existing?
I'm suggesting that we require a paved driveway.
Right, yeah, I just removed that word. So you can build one.
Yeah, right. It just happens that it's, they already have, but I don't know that, and that's not something I looked for when I was driving around. People come up on that, that somebody doesn't have a driveway and would want, would want this and they'd have.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any like, in my field. But that's, that's.
What do you do about the ones that have shared driveways?
That would be more of a challenge.
We have seven.
And I don't think their neighborhood is in, but there probably is along Summit Street.
There is on eight. I don't know whether there's, but I know there's two.
Well, there's still a side setback on the property line, right? Can't build right to the property line. If it's a shared driveway, the property line most likely goes down.
Down the middle, so there's not.
So they would have to extend driveway.
And there's no, they have, right, because you're covered that.
Right.
So they actually, I mean, this is it, only here that you don't have to have.
They've got, they've got way over.
Yeah.
You can't build on.
So we will have that existing, that existing, or existing. I don't really like 18 feet.
I think that came from another city. I think that came from another city.
Actually, don't mind 18. As long as they're well-toed concrete, they're willing to stick 10 grade in concrete.
I think it shouldn't be 18 feet with denied for driveway.
Yeah.
Right, right, so it's got to be literally concrete.
18. Yeah, with the concrete in red garden. Yeah.
When would they fold?
Yeah, that's true.
Depends on the house.
I had somebody recently that wanted to pay for her whole backyard. Don't have the regulations that you can't do that.
One of the ones that.
Don't have to.
Area, I think it's trendy area.
Good point.
If carport comes straight out, I mean, it is right. Right against.
I know this is in the Bradmeek area, but have you all seen the house on eight and nine? They've redone that. And it doesn't look bad, and they redid the approach. And then half of the, they did a sidewalk, like in the middle of the yard, we did that. And then half of the yard is like brand-new gravel. And, and then the other side is, of course, is grass, like they didn't do the whole yard. But, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't look bad. I mean, I'm not the one out there, don't get me wrong. But something like, something like that, you know.
To take gray house.
Mm-hmm.
So what are we thinking on the whip?
18, have a two-car.
That's, that's what the tension was.
It's on a house like this that has single car. You want to have it too far, like, to be like entire front yard or?
No, because it won't fit with the roofline. That's gonna be, that's gonna be the catalyst of all this. It's gotta fit the house. They have that gable coming out, so you can't make it work.
But how do you, how do you write that here?
Well, it's, it's gotta.
It just says match the house, but let's see. Didn't realize I can't put an 18 foot in an entire front yard.
What are you thinking about the whip? For the whip? Have just a single car? That's what it needs to be.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, it would be really hard to do. Unless you got a really big house, but there's not big houses like that.
No, there isn't houses like this.
And even along like first street. Now, where you might see that in a pilot drive.
Yeah.
Some of those are like double car garages.
Yeah, and, and at that point, and they could. That way they could come and ask. But for the most part, this area is the sound ones.
I did just have another request recently, totally different, never had an alley today, or possibly a thingless.
Similar scenario, they wanted to put a carport on the front of their garage, they have it.
Because we're the same, same moves that we have here.
Yeah, if they have, if they have alley access, then, I mean, this is, this is designed for people that do not have alley.
Yeah, the minimum is designed for people that don't have it.
So.
I thought that was important, to put that in.
Yeah, for sure.
Otherwise, it's a true free for all.
Yeah, right.
But they don't have alley access, but they do have a front. You already have two covered parking plus, but you just want two more, is that good?
Is there any thing, any ordinance against carport in front of the garage? If they have, if it'll have the driveway, then fit both cars. So there's no ordinance that they couldn't, so.
There's a house up there on eight street. Eight, and just a block off of Kansas. They just put a carport in front of their house. Just that's a set work.
Matter of fact, did they come and admit it?
You don't have to, because they got tons of land there.
So eight on.
Eight. North, or south. That will drop by there.
Why don't they have to come in?
Yeah, they would actually. If it's, uh, anything, any structure that's larger than 200 square feet.
It's just, yeah, one of the jump plan ones, so.
Do you think Kansas?
Two blocks, they're one block south.
Oh, I know where it's at. That's a house that sits up on here, it was a little bit of a popper, oh, cherry, cherry.
Oh, the house that's back.
Oh, yeah, way back.
I don't remember this particular case.
I do remember.
So should we just leave that 18 foot? And we're just, because you catch that with, that's number six.
Yeah.
What is the one, how wide is the one?
I don't know exactly how. When we do in our parking regulations, the parking space has to be 19 feet wide. Most cars are not 9 feet wide.
You're probably. So you'd have to seven.
Well, when you try to park in a narrow parking spot, it probably feels like it. Uh, pickup truck is gonna possibly be on. Especially with.
So 12 feet would be plenty of space.
Or that would make it difficult for them to open the passenger door.
I don't know what mine works, there's a privacy fence right here, and my house is right here. And I'm sure mine's.
But I did see the regulations that are on the books at that time. They, we do still have a provision for this exact thing, where you could request, it was called a variance, I don't, that's not the appropriate term, it's an exception. Where you could do that, and it was very similar conditions. We, there is a precedent for us having that. Having, having that avenue for people to put carports over. We just don't have.
Right, yeah.
But that was a case where, yes, every single one of them had to come.
Yeah.
And there was a law title.
Yeah, we had to get, when we did, we had to get the neighbors to agree.
Yes, and that would be obviously the other thing that they used to do. I don't like that because the problem with, I would rather that be settled in a public hearing. Because what happens is people just say, no, that's spite for their neighbor. That's not what we're going for. We want them to come to a public hearing and say why they don't. Yes. I think that's. If you were going that route.
If you have enough points to complain, you need to have enough audience show up here and complain.
That's why nobody came to this hearing that was opposed, but they could have, I guess, and could have said why they didn't think that was a good idea.
But I am thankful that you submitted your documentation of the neighbors that were not opposed.
Right, everybody was forged. We're gonna have a law, we're gonna have it everywhere. Okay, gentlemen. How do you feel about with opinions on how wide you want this?
But even ladies?
Yeah. You want to stay with the 18, you want to go with the narrower, what do you want to do?
They still have to apply for a permit, right?
Right.
So somewhere in that's where all says, they could say, like, it says 18 feet is bigger, but I don't know.
So let's just say they have a double car garage, or a double, you know.
Double car garage.
Or a concrete, and then you say, well, you only need a 12 foot. This white, leaves it wide open, they can go nine foot, 10 foot, 12 foot.
As long as they have, same there.
Correct. What I'm saying is if they have.
Yeah, if you want, if you want gravel under your carport, put it in the back.
Yep.
No metal ones?
Right, well, and I'm, like their neighborhood, there would be, there's no metal houses.
Well, that's just a question. I think it, that should be able to, same stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I would argue that if it was a metal house, yes, because it's gonna be compatible with that. But it's still not a carport that you buy down at the house in town, you know, you're building. Most likely.
The best looking ones in the area look like they were originally built within the house, very compatible.
That's what.
Yeah. That's our plan, thank you.
They, and they, they just have that on the roof.
Yeah.
So what's next? Put this on the agenda for them?
Well. Well, have we discussed it all? So we have all the answers they need?
I would be satisfied.
They're really, the only change I have from this is remove the word existing from number one.
It's really nothing to go on, it has to go.
So what I will do is I will formally set a public hearing. I do have a problem, though. Because the second Tuesday in November is a city holiday. Does it mean it's impossible to have a meeting that day anyways?
We can have it anyway, I keep the commission out of our business.
We can have this meeting anytime, can't we?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, you could put it on.
It's different.
Just be aware that the first and third are city commission meetings.
So if we had it on Monday before, that wouldn't give you enough time to get a place on a, attended for the city?
Being like 10?
What's today? I don't think we would be able to do it.
Okay.
And we, I could still get the 11th. That, that would be.
I am off. That'll keep me away from the city commission meeting.
You've got all the city commission meetings, you like it.
Not if there's a conflict, I have to be here.
So is the 11th open?
Well, it's not that it isn't open, it's that you don't work that day.
It's that.
It's a holiday.
We'll pay him double.
Oh, you can pay me overtime if I'm gonna be here.
Yeah. Hey. Star decision. It doesn't have to be on a Tuesday, I imagine.
No, it's way too long.
That's just six years.
Yeah.
Does it have, does a special call meeting have to be on a Tuesday? It'll be on like a Monday? 10, the.
The 10th wouldn't give us enough time.
No, the meeting's gonna be on.
So I have to, for any public hearing, I have to publish it, and there has to be 20 days left before we can have a meeting. Right?
So we're really looking at.
And the problem is, the newspaper doesn't publish every day.
Yeah.
We can't help that.
Josh, if we get the public hearing and stuff, today's the 14th. We could. Would have to be the week after.
Yeah.
It'd have to be the, like, November 17th.
Well, I guess we'll be there.
Otherwise, I think it'd be December.
Thinking up in December. No, the two contractors in here.
I thought you said you.
Oh, yeah, I could change that, didn't I? Yeah, I could do some.
Can't you?
No, wait a minute, you're talking second Tuesday is the eighth.
I don't wanna do it again.
You can have it the eighth if you all come to Hawaii.
We're gonna have a hearing in Hawaii.
Oh, are you paying for all our trips?
No, but, but I'll teach you.
The problem is, you're gonna have to also fly to the public that wants to come to it.
We don't like to do that, aren't we?
So if you could do it, um.
I think the 11th may be the best deal.
11th of November, let's do it.
You don't mind? Okay.
11th, 11th, come out and down for an hour or two.
11 and 11.
We'll buy him something.
Does that bother you? You don't have to come.
Oh, my, for something too.
Okay. Actually, it's a zoning meeting.
Well, this would be.
This would be planning, yeah, we're doing an ordinance, so.
If this is our planning commission meeting, and this is only one of the three other items on the agenda, we should be done in 30 minutes.
That's just an hour.
30 minutes is less than an hour.
Well, I think that'd be here beforehand, I'd stay afterward.
I don't know how I'd miss that that was a holiday when I made this schedule. Because I didn't write it down that, oh, that's a holiday, we.
Yeah. All right.
I don't have a holiday.
I'm retired, it's Saturday.
You're right. Sound like my dad. Saturday.
Okay.
Yes, I will, I will.
Your thing.
I believe I'll be able to do it because I probably can still get it into Thursday's paper. So that would be the 7th with 16th.
20 days.
20 days, yeah. So technically possible. Just gonna have to get on it tomorrow.
Write it down, then technically too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's all electronic now.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything else on the agenda?
Nope.
What should I go?
Second.
Any questions, gentlemen? All of the signified facts.
Aye.
I don't wanna stay long.
You can stay longer, but you have to be outside the building.
I've been that.
An hour, that a public hearing would have to.
Or the building too. How wide is your driveway?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I majored in. I never, yeah.
I think about this. So I think it's.
That's.
You guys say it.
I think it's about. Oh, because of the car.
Yeah, not very long, but.